Good morning, everyone. It is 8:31 a.m. on June the 16th, and we will call this meeting to order. We will start with our Chaplain prayer, and today we have Marcela Jenkins offering us a prayer. So if we would all bow our heads, please.
Good morning, everyone. Dear God, in the Scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our Mayor Brenda Gunter, for the various levels of the city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern among the conflict and interests and the issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for our police department, as well as around this country, that you would grant them wisdom to make wise decisions as they serve and protect our communities. I also ask you to protect them from all hurt, harm, dangers seen and unseen. I pray, Lord, that you protect San Angelo from the spread of the COVID-19 as we turn and seek your face. I pray for the agenda set before our council today. Please give an assurance of what will please you and what will benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of San Angelo. It is in your most blessed name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much, Marcela.
You're welcome.
On special instructions, all members of the council and staff, and it cannot be public because the public's not here, should begin speaking by stating their full name, their SMD position, or their role within the city. We will move into public comment. At this time, council members may ask staff members questions regarding public comments submitted via email. We only have one public comment, and that public comment is the following. It is from Roxanne de Vila, and it says, "I would like to know how the issue was handled related to the police chief's inappropriate Facebook comments. I didn't see any apology or statement related to his actions." Then I have the following to offer this morning, and that is that the police chief Frank Carter and I are announcing today the creation of a working group that will examine police policies and practices in an effort to prevent abuse from occurring. We also hope this working group will help to strengthen the relationship between our citizens and our police department. We hope the time and effort this group spends on better understanding our police department, that we will have the opportunity to address potential issues that could in fact undermine citizens' ability to seek justice. We believe that the more the community participates in the understanding of the policies that are directed to our police by the state and civil service seeking, the more we can determine if reform is necessary. We want to make sure that we understand that we believe police Frank Carter and his staff have done a great job of representing the citizens in this community. But because of the issues that are happening across the country, I think that we would be wrong if we did not also look at the issues that exist. And that means trust but verified. That means we want to make sure the public is well-informed in terms of how our police function, how they rule, how they approach various situations. We must be a community that sets a standard for how communities and police can work together, side by side, and addresses social injustices, and at the same time, keep a community safe. And with that, what I'd like to do is start by announcing three people I would like on this committee, this working group, besides obviously Frank Carter and some of his staff. And they would be Billy DeWitt. Would you be willing to serve on this working group, Billy?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. I've already discussed it with Lucy, so she will as well. And then Teresa James, I believe we need someone from the city attorney's office as well in this working group, so I'm asking that you join this group.
Yes, ma'am.
With that, Billy and Teresa, we would ask that you put together a list of citizens that you believe would be very important in this working group. And again, I want to make sure it's called a working group, because I believe what we want to do is work together for the best possible results.
Yes, I agree, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will continue to put that group together, and we will, at some future council meeting, talk about the group who's on it and the beginning workings of this group.
Mayor, I have a question, please.
Please.
As we put this working group together, is there any number in mind about how many each of us should, you know, recommend that be a part of it from each of our areas?
What I would recommend is the following, the initial group being no more than 10 citizens in addition to the people that I've already talked about this morning, because I think you can create a framework to start with. And then if you need to subdivide into more smaller groups, more people involved and looking at specific issues, that could be done as well.
Thank you.
But I think we need a small group to start with, start to formulate what we want to achieve. And from there, we will talk about bringing more and more people in to make sure that we get a very broad-based approach to this issue.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
In addition, I want to read the following. If you've been watching local news or following the city of San Angelo online, then you've likely noticed that there has been a spike in positive cases of COVID-19 in our county. This rise in cases stems from people gathering over Memorial Day weekend. Since that weekend, we have reported more than 70 positive cases. Community spread is alive in our community. While you might see X number of cases in a day, know that the number of people quarantined or isolated is usually much higher than the number of positive cases from that day. If someone has a party at their home and tests positive for COVID-19, then every single person who was there will also need to be quarantined. We've heard the argument that if people can go to grocery stores, then they should be able to have friends over at their house. Our health officials here in the city of San Angelo have confirmed that large gatherings, even in the privacy of your own home, are not any safer than going to public places. In fact, they have proven to be less safe. Why? Because you are spending longer periods of time with people in a confined space when they come to your home. When you go to the grocery store, you are generally not there long. The less time you spend around others, the less the risk you have of contracting COVID-19. When the city was in a stay-at-home order in April, many citizens complained that our officials were abusing their authority and that citizens should be allowed to manage themselves. Well, now is the time for you to responsibly manage yourselves. Other citizens think we need to be stricter with our authority and place the city on another lockdown. As the governor has said, we cannot be stricter than his executive orders. So we cannot issue another stay-at-home order from the city at this time. So this means that it is time for each and every citizen of San Angelo to step up and take personal responsibility and use social discipline. While we can't require everyone to wear masks, every person should be doing this to help their fellow citizens. If you are a business owner, then you should be taking the necessary measures to not only protect your employees, but also your customers. This includes wearing masks and taking extra precautions to prevent the spread of germs. The spike in cases should serve as a wake-up call to everyone in Palm Green County. The time to act is now, today. We need everyone to step up to help protect San Angelo and its surrounding areas. We realize it is summertime, and everyone has been locked up in their homes for the last few months. But we must continue to be responsible and to do our part to limit the spread of this disease. And we all know that we heard high temperatures would kill this virus. Well, if you take a look at our numbers, our heat, our 100-degree temperatures have not killed this virus. Citizens, I urge you to stay home and only leave for essential services such as work, groceries, and medical appointments. When you do leave, please wear a mask to avoid spreading anything. This is what our local health authority has advised at this time. Wash your hands, often for 20 seconds. Do not touch your face, and that's hard. I did not realize how often I touched my face until we were told, "Do not touch your face." Use delivery services to get your meals from restaurants. Don't take the whole family to the grocery store. Get what you need and get out. Stay six feet away from others at all times. Use your common sense. Self-isolation means no running errands, no meeting up, or driving around with friends. It means staying home and staying safe. We need everyone to do this to stop the spread and put an end to COVID-19. I remind everybody, what we have today is a tremendous impact of community spread. Regardless of whether we say it is contact to a known person, it is community spread. That means from one person to another person, regardless of the fact that that person was also diagnosed as positive. It's contact from one person to another. That's community spread. I want to thank the citizens for the numerous amount of letters that you have sent to us in regards to the cable service that we receive here in San Angelo. I am going to encourage you to continue to send your comments, your emails, your letters to City Hall. We have at this point received 42 letters and emails, and I know there's more of you out there who are very frustrated with the internet cable service that you are receiving. So please continue to send emails to michael.dane@cosatx.us, or you may mail it to City Hall Attention Michael Dane at 72 College Avenue 76901. I know that there's a lot out there on Facebook about a meeting on July the 17th, which would be at our July 17th city council meeting. If in fact the governor allows us to meet again at McNeese Convention Center, we will at that point in time, and we invite citizens to come and talk about the frustrations they have with your current internet cable service. I'm sorry, that is July 21st. I said the 17th because that's what's going around on Facebook, but to correct that, that is July 21st. Daniel, do you have any comments you'd like to add to that?
Yes, Mayor. The letters that we're receiving right now, whether they're by mail or by email, are being sent to the Federal Communications Commission. We're also sending to the Public Utilities Commission of Texas. So all those letters that come in, again, we're putting a cover sheet on that and a cover letter and sending those in as well. I have been in contact with the new VP for our area, Michael Horton, and he is telling me right now, I requested and asked that he, so he actually attend the meeting, the physical meeting that we have, to present a plan for improvement. I did tell him that at that point, we would have quite a few citizens there that would have a lot of questions for him. He is prepared to be here at a future meeting, at that meeting, the second meeting in July, to answer your questions as well. However, we will proceed at this point the way we're doing it now and submitting those letters to the FCC and the PUC. So again, thank you for submitting all theirs and keep them coming in.
All right. With that, we will now move into the consent agenda. I will ask if council members have a request to remove something from the consent agenda at this point. With no one asking to remove anything from the consent agenda, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Eric Thomas, single member, three.
Move approval.
Okay, Tommy has made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Eric Thomas, single member, three.
Eric has made a motion, a second to the motion. Because we do not have public comment, we will move into a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, the motion passes 6-0. With that, we will move into the regular agenda, and we will start with item A. Consider a resolution optimizing the use of competitive seal proposal procurement method for the expansion of the Hickory water supply. And today we have Allison Strube, and we have Scott Hibbs. Is Scott here today?
Mayor, I'm here.
Okay, great. Allison, you're on. Scott, are you're on? Either or.
I just have a quick introduction. We did talk to you about C-Mar, Construction Manager at Risk, last November as a procurement method for the Hickory project. We've had a little change in plans, and I think Scott will go over that in his presentation. But without, I'll turn it over to Scott, and he can talk to you about competitively sealed proposals.
Thank you, Allison. Mayor, Council, good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I wish we were in person, but maybe after this COVID thing gets away, we'll be able to get back to more normal. I'm putting up the presentation right now. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. As Allison mentioned, we talked previously, and the council in November approved the use of an alternative delivery method, the Construction Manager at Risk, what we typically refer to as C-Mar. We're going to talk a little bit about why we're coming back to the council to look at a second alternative delivery method, which is the competitively, competitive sealed proposals, and the reason for seeking council's approval to move from C-Mar to CSP for this particular project. So just a quick review for the council on why, for this particular project, alternative delivery is the selected or the suggested method of procuring a contractor. Most, everybody is well-familiar with the traditional design, bid, and build approach. With the Hickory project, this is a large project. It is a very complex project, and it is one that city staff, based on its experience with the Phase One construction of Hickory, would like a little bit more control over the selection of the contractor and how the contract is actually executed. So when we look at alternative delivery, we're trying to find good methods for the owner to have increased involvement and control. That lends itself to less construction risk from the city's perspective. We also look at alternative delivery when we have a schedule that is a priority. That is not necessarily the case with this project. But what is applicable to this is the project is complex. If you remember, it involves additional wells at the wellfield, additional work at the wellfield, and construction at the groundwater treatment plant in town. So it's spread out, and it's a large project. The key provision and the key reason that we come to you with alternative delivery for this project is it allows the city to select a contractor that provides what we call and what the state calls the best value to the city. And that's done on both cost and non-cost factors. So it allows us to make sure that we can match a contractor that is best fit for the project to the project, instead of just selecting a contractor based on cost. And by doing that, over the course of time, these methods have been proven to reduce change orders, certainly to reduce disputes and claims that can come out of a large, complex project. So now, just going back to Construction Manager at Risk, or C-Mar, you guys authorized that back in November at a council meeting. And we made that recommendation to you because the C-Mar method allows a contractor to be selected during the design process. So it really brings the contractor on board early and helps them to have a role to play in how the project is shaped and finished. Along with that, this method allows the establishment of what we call a guaranteed maximum price, or a GMP. When the contractor issues their guaranteed maximum price, that then is the price that they have to do the work for. And that shifts a lot of the risk from the city to the contractor. They are guaranteeing, if you will, that they can do the job for that amount of money. So it is by far our preferred method and one that the industry has been moving towards and routinely uses. However, the Water Development Board, who is the funding agency for this project, recently issued a series of draft guidelines on how the board intends to implement C-Mar on its projects. And there are three key considerations that the documents have required that really reduces the benefits of C-Mar and in my mind removes it from a viable contracting method for this project. The first, if you remember what I just said a minute ago, that part of the benefit of C-Mar is having the contractor input early into the project. Under the board's guidelines that they are issuing, they are requiring 100% design before you can get the C-Mar involved. So that really reduces the benefit of being able to put out equipment packages and other things early in the process to take advantage of costs. The real limiting factor with C-Mar under the board's guidelines are the last two bullet items. They are requiring that all equipment and construction packages require individual review. And what that means, under a typical C-Mar contract, they are the overall contractor, but they bid each individual portion of the project. They bid each individual piece of equipment. So you may have, on a large, complex project like this, you might have, just in round terms, 100 construction packages that they would issue and administer. The way the board is interpreting and guiding how they're going to do this on their projects, they would have to have individual review and approval on each of those construction packages. So instead of the board's involvement on one package, the entire facility, they're saying, "We want to look at each individual package." And we have found in working with them with this method that that is just, it's just not possible. They are stretched to handle the projects that they have, let alone to multiply those projects by, you know, a factor of 100 to get them out. And the final thing that they've put in their guidelines, they are limiting the C-Mar's ability to what we call self-perform. If you remember, part of the reason that you choose C-Mar is they're going to give you that guaranteed maximum price. And it's their responsibility to hit that. So a lot of times, what you will find, if they cannot find a sub consultant or subcontractor to perform certain aspects of work, they may choose to self-perform or do that themselves in order to achieve that guaranteed maximum price. Well, if you eliminate the ability for the C-Mar to self-perform work, our concern is that C-Mars are not going to be anxious to put a guaranteed maximum price together, or they'll put a price together that is too high. So as we look at what the options are under the same government code that you see on your screen, we are allowed to do competitive sealed proposals. The process for that, if you just quickly scan down the bullet points, we advertise for a request for proposals. Like C-Mar, we can establish an evaluation for the proposals based on cost and, most importantly, non-cost factors. And that's really the critical component of alternative delivery that I want to make sure that everybody understands. We would hold a pre-proposal meeting, and then, once the proposals are received, they are publicly opened and read aloud. The benefit of competitive sealed proposals then at this point is we can evaluate the proposals on cost and those non-cost factors. And once we select a contractor, we have an opportunity, city staff and your consulting team, to negotiate with them on a final price. So the differences between CSP, Competitive Sealed Proposals, and C-Mar, we basically get one bite at the apple to negotiate with the contractor when the contract is issued, where under the C-Mar concept, every individual package that is released, we would have that opportunity. So we're a little less flexible with CSP or Competitive Sealed Proposals, but it still accomplishes our number-one goal, which is to be able to select a contractor based on other criteria in addition to price. Once a contractor is selected, the process is the same with the recommendation of the award coming to the city and the Water Development Board, and then you move into construction. So finally, the recommendation from the consulting team and from staff is to allow the use of CSPs as an alternative procurement method for the Hickory project. And that's a lot of information, and I would be glad to pause right here and see if council has any questions.
Well, I think it makes sense, Scott, because I can't imagine that it would be efficient and that you could guarantee along the way the project, if you have to go out, if you have multiple people doing the project. Because if they've got another project, we're going to be second or third down the line. They might not be able to get to us on the timeframe. We need that piece of this project done. So it seemed to me to be a difficult process if everything was subcontracted out to the tunnel.
Yep, yes, Mayor. And that's exactly, one quick thing to let you and the council know. The Water Development Board did ask for comments on their guidelines, and Allison and her staff put in a letter. Obviously, we put in a letter, and I know numerous, numerous cities have responded to the Water Development Board and are critical of their guidelines because they're eliminating really one of the best methods that we have, C-Mar, by how they intend to implement it. So your comments are spot on.
Are there other questions from council at this point for Scott?
No questions, just a comment, Mayor. It makes sense to me to us have, I would say, more things in our hands than what would otherwise be with the state being involved. So I'm in agreement with Scott's presentation.
Okay. Any other comments from council? All right, Scott, is there anything else you want to add to this?
No, ma'am. Thank you for the opportunity today.
Okay, thank you. So with that, you have in your background documents, the resolution authorizing the use of competitive sealed proposal procurement method. So do I have a motion to accept this resolution to use a competitive sealed proposal?
Mayor Tommy Hebert, single member, District 1. I move that we accept the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Tommy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by layne? With no public comment being offered, we will take a vote, all in favor of the resolution. Please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, the motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Scott. The next item is item B, and it is a presentation and review of the draft Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And today we have Carl White and Dunaway Associates, Jennifer Melody and Philip Neely here to present the master plan.
Yes, good morning. Carl White here, Parks and Recreation Director. As a quick introduction to this item, what we're asking council to do is to help us review this draft plan and give us input on it. And we intend to return to the city council for adoption of the plan at the next meeting on July 7. It is standard practice. It is standard practice for cities our size to have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan basically done about every five years. The last one we did was 2012. The goal is to have this plan adopted and on file with Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. That helps us be eligible and competitive for grants, which we've been able to secure in the past. The plan is that our consultants will talk about, helps us assess our current system, our Parks and Recreation System, assess our current facilities and programs, and with the input from the public, helps us identify what's important to the public in terms of facility improvements and recreation programs. It doesn't necessarily tell us what we have to do. It suggests what we could do to better our system. So I would like to introduce Dunaway Associates. We're nearing the end of this process. We started back in the fall. We had a board meeting yesterday afternoon with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The team that's here present today is Tim Hare, he's out of the Midland Office with Dunaway Associates, Jennifer Melody with the office out of San Antonio, and Philip Neely, who I think will do most of the speaking from the Fort Worth office. They've been great to work with, they've been very responsive, knowledgeable, and flexible. They kind of had to be flexible with the situation we've had, since it occurred during the middle of our process. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Philip.
Carl, before you turn it over, I have a couple of questions. Number one, how many citizens responded to the request for public comment?
On, for, at the board meeting or for the survey?
No, we went out for the survey.
I believe it was...
I can answer. This is Jennifer Melody from Dunaway. I can answer that question. We have 928 respondents, households respond.
How many?
928 households.
And that, from all the master plans we've done since 2000, that's the best response we've gotten.
Okay. And then, second of all, did we put a dollar amount to this recommendation of this master plan? If, how much this master plan would require in terms of funding?
In terms of any improvements that we wish to seek? Funding for, no. It doesn't suggest, there are some estimates of what those improvements may cost, and they'll show that in the presentation. But, again, it doesn't say this, San Angelo, you need to do this. Here are some recommendations that we have based on the public input. This is what the cost range may be. It doesn't talk about necessarily where those improvements should go, but I think they'll present that in the presentation here in a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, this is Billy. I have a question. Carl, I don't know if this is a you or Jennifer question, but when you were doing the surveys, how did you get the information out that this was going to be going on?
We sent it out through all the social media that the city uses. We sent it out to all the media. It was done online and also by hard copy. There was a link to the city's website where you could find the survey instrument on the city's website. That's the primary means.
Okay. And do we know if there was a cross-section of San Angelo from all parts of the city that responded? Did we keep any kind of record of that?
I think the survey instrument was a little bit limited. We have limited demographic information. We do have ages, but not necessarily from what part of the city we got the responses from.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm assuming that it is presented from a perspective that there's no prioritization on any of this? It's simply an overall perspective of what could be done by area?
That's correct. It does prioritize programs, recreation programs, and facilities that were identified as important to the public. And that is needed in terms of our grant applications. We do need that prioritization of what facilities are most important, because if we apply for a grant for a project in the future, within the next five years, we do need to show that and show that we've gone through this process. And we get extra points if we can tap into those important facility needs as part of our grant application.
Are there any grants out there at this point that you're aware of?
Yes, TPWD always has grants in terms of recreation facilities, parks improvements, trail grants, voting access grants, as well as program grants.
So there's some out there right now we can apply?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Mayor, I have another question.
Go ahead, Billy. Billy, go ahead.
Carl, in looking at some of the background information, I did see, you know, some of the parks identified by location, or I guess all of them. And then, there was a priority chart on page 14 in the PowerPoint presentation. At some point, will we speak to the specifics of those priorities and locations?
The consultants will show the presentation, and we can get it as far deep in the trenches as you want to on any particular location. It's up to you.
Okay, well, I just had a specific question, but I'll listen to the presentation, and maybe my question will be answered.
Okay, Jennifer, or Philip, whoever's on, you're on.
Okay. Good morning. It's Philip Neely. I apologize, for some reason, my video continues to be locked. So, but I'll making sure that y'all can hear me okay. But thank you again, Mayor and Council, letting us be a part of this. Just want to really thank Carl and his staff for all the help for our eight or nine months of work. It's really unique and great timing to be doing a system-wide park master plan. When you think about the, you know, these months, these last two and a half months with COVID, the demand and activity in park systems across Texas and the country has been amazing. A lot of it's had to be closed and controlled because of distancing, but just people tapping into park systems is at a completely different level now, and y'all probably are experiencing it. We had some good dialogue with Park Board yesterday about this. So the demand for open space, passive parks, trails, et cetera, has just increased measurably. So here you are, you've got a new master plan that can really be a guide and help you, because there's going to be all kinds of things that come out of the COVID window of time that's going to affect public park systems. So Jennifer will click along, and I'll try to move swiftly, and then we'll have more questions as we go. In terms of the overall study, we really went through two major phases. Phase one, we kicked this off, by the way, back in October. So again, we're about eight months into it. Phase one was about studying the entire park system and beginning to tap into public input, both at some stakeholder or community-type meetings and then the survey. Phase two is where you begin to build the priorities and the specifics of where new or updated improvements could happen within the park system as a whole. We did go through all the inventory again, real thanks to Carl and his team, where we got information throughout the system. The three areas, the key areas that we were looking at were the Concho River, the community area in Lake Nazworthy, in terms of the uniquenesses of what those areas provide in terms of public parks and resources. Again, these are just enlargements of those areas, where we get into the specifics where the parks are and amenities and what future amenities could occur there. In terms of the inventory, it's always a major step to update. You have a large, diverse system. So between Carl's information and us building the inventory sheets, we have really good, up-to-date data on your entire system. Sometimes you'll use this in a more simplified version to provide it website information to your public. It's great for people to know what resources are available. Some people in cities all over our state are realizing what they have in their park system. They had no idea those things were available. The programming side is what people participate in. You have well over 50 programs. Again, these are just all the detail of the programs that are currently happening throughout your community. And then, we, in October, when we, the team, when Jennifer and Tim and I were there, we kicked off the visioning sessions, met with Park Board, and then that led into the survey. The survey ended up being a really lean, two-page survey instrument. That was one of the shorter ones I've ever seen, but it was ideal. It was user-friendly, really got into facility needs, and people giving comments about activities as well as some indoor needs. And that's really the focus of the survey. A key thing to think about, this was good discussion yesterday with Park Board, a Parkland dedication ordinance, which you don't currently have, would be very significant in looking ahead to new growth areas, infill areas, and where there's gaps in the park system. The Parkland dedication would be tied to your development code or development activities. It's really significant, used in many, many communities across the state. Sidewalk ordinance would help on connectivity and requirements for trails and sidewalks, and then, again, filling in service areas where there's gaps, where people just don't have proximity to parks. In terms of, this is, some questions have already come up about the survey, there can be a lot more detail that can be provided, and most of it's in our full booklet. But your survey respondents were very much in that young adult, families, kids, activities. And so it was a good, it was a good mix of feedback. A lot of times, the families with kids and what they're looking ahead to for need, they participated strongly in the survey. We asked them what activities would they most be interested in, because activities and programs drive facility needs in terms of what do you have to build or have in your system? And here were the top four: aquatics, nature programs, kayaking, and summer programs. So those were strong. Then we ask about outdoor park amenities, specific features or elements within the parks. And we had them rank these, so that somebody couldn't just say, I want all 15 of these. We asked them to rank their top, second, third, like that, and it was really great to get this information. These are the top eight, and I'll touch on these more here in a minute. We also had then the ranking, what we would call moderate, express need, and then lower. It doesn't mean that these items can't move around in different capital programs year by year, or grants, or partnerships, or other funding. It just shows you where the demand by the public is for facilities and amenities within the park system. We took that, and we began to build the action plan and implementation plan, where we look at high, moderate, low. We list all those elements expressed by the citizens, and then we give just ranges of budget. And then, on the chart, we have all these different parks listed, as well as about 25 funding sources. There's some creative funding sources you already use, there will be some others that you could begin to apply or bring into adding money to your dollars. So anyway, these charts get into a lot of detail, but these become your roadmap or your game plan.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Billy, go ahead.
Okay. Where you have the dots under the high priority based on location, is that an indication that that's a high priority for that specific park?
It is. What we're saying then, so like on splash pad, number one rated demand, those are potential parks that could have a splash pad. That doesn't mean you'll ever build one in every one of those. But if you look, you know, three years, five years, seven years down the road, those parks are very appropriate, in our opinion, for a potential splash pad or spray ground.
Okay.
Go ahead, Billy.
Okay. I'm looking at number four for restrooms, and I look at Martin Luther King Junior Memorial Park. That has come up in several of our city council meetings about the need for restrooms at MLK, but I don't see a dot on the priority for that.
Okay. Well, that's great feedback. Part of the benefit of being able to be with your group today is things just like that. So that can be added, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
This is Carl. That's a good point. That's why we need your input, like Philip said.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons I asked, although it's obviously in our background documents, about the priorities, because when it comes to discussing this, we want to make sure, because it gets very emotional, and we want to make sure that if we're going to do a master plan, that we take the emotion out of it by area and develop it based off of high priority after we've done this evaluation. So all the input we can possibly get is important, so that we get it right and we do it methodically, and that's important to me.
Yeah, that's great. You want to have quantified need expressed by your citizens, and you have that. You have that data now, and that really helps you on future grants. Carl may mention this again, but with Texas Parks and Wildlife, you'll have a system-wide plan with expressed need by your citizen base, and that's so critical in a balanced plan. All right, we'll move on. We begin to, these are the top eight. We'll just give a quick splash, no pun intended, on all of these. But in terms of the citizens' demand, water, aquatics, and all those kinds of things were very high in the survey. Spray grounds and splash pads are so popular throughout, particularly the Southwest, all the hot zones. And so these can be small, very small, they could be larger, there could be a signature spray ground somewhere in town that you even have a sponsor on. I think the beginning movement of spray grounds and splash pads was probably Olympic Centennial Park there in Atlanta during the Olympics back in 96. It really started a movement of, you know, plazas with water. So these will be great, these will be really successful in your community. Second, expressed was adding shade to playgrounds. That means if you build new playgrounds, you know, 20 years ago, hardly anybody was putting shade on a playground, but today, it's become the norm, trying to provide shade both to existing playgrounds or future playgrounds. Number three, aquatic center. This is important to touch on. Aquatic center would be awesome, but, you know, this would be a major investment, probably a major partnership, and would be really, I'm sure, a huge success in your community. But aquatics, again, and water, and Park Board responded to this yesterday about the interest in aquatic-type activities. So that's number three. Number four...
What you stop a minute, please. Well, what I find interesting is that we separate splash pads from aquatic center outdoor, because it's basically all water-based. And to me, it's a big arena, and separating them is kind of silly, because it's all water recreational-based activities.
Right. We ask the citizens to distinguish between these. You know, an aquatic center will be paid, it'll be a paid experience, probably 100% cost recovery for you. A splash pad could be smaller in neighborhood parks or within a community park that has a real neat space for it, and they're free. You know, they're operated on timers, and so they're very different in both your O and M cost as well as your capital investment.
Yes, but I've also seen many cities, particularly, I've seen it in Texas Monthly, where our Texas Highways Magazine, where cities have created splash pad arena areas where you would do the same thing in terms of an aquatic center, where you might have three or four in one location, which would require a fee to come into it to help pay for the maintenance of these, because they're not maintenance-free. And what you want to do is be able to have some level of revenue to help recoup either initial expense and/or maintenance expense along the way.
Right. That's good. Number four, in terms of citizen-ranked amenities for parks, would be restrooms. There, I mean, these do stir up all kinds of philosophy and opinions about public restrooms. Generally speaking, neighborhood parks are a less length of stay. Most neighborhood parks across Texas do not have public restrooms. Just depends on the activity type. But restrooms can be very, very small, very economical, industrial-grade, they can just add another public service in your community parks and other sports areas, and you know this, but it's not something that's being proposed in every single park. That wouldn't even be appropriate. Number five, trails. As I said yesterday, trails are always in the top five, probably any city in the United States, but certainly in our hotter weather. Trails of various types, long linear trail systems, loop trails within smaller parks, connections to neighborhoods, connections to schools. So trails are great. You get a lot of bang for the investment on trails. Number six is new or updated playgrounds. This was just to ask people what their demand for playgrounds, more playgrounds. And so that was number six on the overall express need. And so that was number six on the overall express need. Different from asking about shade because you just may, over the next five years, you may add shade to certain playgrounds throughout your system that could benefit from that with your heat. Number seven was about nature trails. You know, it's been a huge movement the last 10, 15 years in the passive side of park systems, where there's softer trails, interpretive trails, soft loops that go off a hard trail network and go into a tree area or some sort of an interpretive area. So these can be, these can be great. And then number eight, which is access to the lake and water and fishing and things like that. So, you know, the community really wants that, those kinds of features as it relates to lake recreation. And that can be, again, that can be in smaller investments, a small fishing pier. It could be a boardwalk, it could be all kinds of things that people enjoy the water. Moving on, we ask about indoor activities, indoor amenities, since we had the survey instrument. Just a comment, your current centers, rec centers, indoor facilities just simply won't accommodate the types of features that the citizens express. So a big dream, a big item going forward for you is going to be how to ultimately add a bigger recreation, kind of a multipurpose center in San Angelo. That we ask them to rank high, moderate, and low. So there were 12 items that the citizens gave us feedback on. See here, yeah, there they are. Again, strong emphasis on aquatics. Let's go into just those top four. Again, if there was a, if there was a new rec center that you built in partnership with another organization or however that came about, the top features, indoor aquatic center or water features. Again, those are very popular. They provide a whole different dynamic within indoor activities and even therapy-type things in a pool. Number two, a swimming pool within indoor facility. Number three, indoor running track. Those are very popular as a part of, usually they wrap around gymnasiums or other big volumes in a rec center. And number four, an indoor rock climbing walls. So that was fun to see that, that there was emphasis. Those come in all kinds of shapes and sizes and heights and colors and challenges. But they're very popular. A lot of rec centers in Texas have added these back into their existing centers. If you got the right area, that you can do it. So those are just a quick look at the top four. Another component, a separate study is within this overall master plan was the Active Living Plan that Carl had us have one of our team members help us on. And it's really tapping into other providers in the community, a range of agencies that deal with public health and wellness, physical infrastructure, walkability, education, et cetera. There was a first meeting, Prose Consultant was our subconsultant. They're outstanding, they do work all over the country. And they met with the group there in November. And then by the time there was going to be some detailed discussion groups, the COVID had set in. So they did some surveys with the stakeholders of that group in April. Two different surveys or questionnaires that were really great for feedback. The group in the first meeting, and Jennifer was there with Prose when they did that back in the fall. But the group created this vision statement, next slide, which really talks about engaging the San Angelo community, creating equitable opportunities throughout your system. And so engaging and really letting public and private agencies work in tandem to provide great resources for wellness, health, activity, and just a whole range of things for citizens of all age. Some of the keys to the Active Living Plan is to promote cross-section or cross-sector partnerships, work within the same vision, public policy, how those public policies work together. And then overall, just, you know, everybody on the same common ground for what active living can be in different segments of the community. Our work concluded or began to wrap up when we went into the big document, the report itself. Again, this will be all the detail. And Carl and you as city leaders, you can, from this, you can, each year, you can look at your potential capital campaign, bonds, or I mean, I'm sorry, grants, partnerships, other funding sources that you would look at year by year. Goes into all the detail on that implementation plan and funding strategies. Let me summarize. In closing, you do have an amazing diverse park system. You're in a fascinating part of the state in terms of the beautiful natural features. And you have a big, pretty sizable system. And so you'll always be challenged with how do we reinvest in our existing parks and resources? And where do we need to provide new facilities or even new parks? It'll just be a careful balancing of that. Your top outdoor amenities that really need to help focus the next several years, the splash pad potential, the future of maybe a really big-time aquatic center, trails. And those can be, those have a lot of different funding sources, the restrooms and then playgrounds. Again, the indoor amenities can be part of a future facility one day. And then the Active Living Plan, again, tapped into both public and private and businesses working in tandem. So we've really enjoyed it. This one's moved fast. When Carl said we want to move fast, he meant it. And here we are, eight months later. I rarely see us do a plan in less than a year, but it's unique timing because of the, what we're dealing with in society as a whole. Park systems are going to have a higher demand, are going to be even more dynamic in what you provide your community. So thank you, we're open to questions.
My first question is, what, tell me, Carl, about our municipal pool. What's the attendance? Give me some background on the use of the municipal pool because I believe when we passed the Habsin sales tax thing several years ago, the aquatic center was part of that, which was where we got the money to redo the municipal pool. How successful has that been?
It has been very successful. We've had very good, steady attendance. In terms of revenue over expenditures, we've always been in the black every year. Now, as the facility gets older, we do see that gap narrow, but we're still to the black every year. Attendance is steady. We're keeping up with the facility in terms of its maintenance. Overall, it's been successful. It's paid for itself.
Great, that's an important part of what I want to talk about. So the other thing I want to make a comment on is how lucky we are as a city of San Angelo that we have Lake Nazworthy and that we have developed a plan for increasing supporting and trying to maximize Lake Nazworthy. So I'm excited that we had citizens support to get funds to really, really pay attention to Lake Nazworthy. So I think that's important. And then second of all, Concho, we have a Concho River that runs through this city. And one of the photographs that was here that I think is very, is a very strong statement is the picture of everyone fishing downtown of the Concho River. That has become a number one activity on that river. And anytime you go by there, it's amazing how many people are using that for fishing. So we have two unbelievably great things that we have to start with in the city. And I know that they have in the past provided a great quality of life. And I know that in the future, they're going to continue to bring a lot of quality life issues to the citizens of San Angelo.
I do have a few.
Go ahead.
Few comments to add. One thing I'm excited about is that some of our top items that showed up important to the public, like Lake Nazworthy, as you mentioned, mayor, pier, access to the lake. We're already in the process of addressing those two needs with the beginning of the boat ramp project, the middle Concho Park, and also work towards replacing the pier. We're going to be able to knock those out fairly quickly with resources that are already in place. Also, playgrounds, we're going to be able to address those as well in terms of replacing or adding the playground to Brentwood Park, refurbishing the playground at Udad Park. We'll hear from Health Foundation this month on our grant application. And then following that, replacing the playground at Kids Kingdom as well as after that Brown Park and Santa Rita Park. And then in terms of nature trail, we have a location that we have a nature trail. We actually have two within the city. One is below the spill, below the dam, Twin Buttes Dam. The other is off Country Club Road. That one's less well-known, but with very minimal resources, we could add that one to our city inventory of nature trails. So I'm excited that without very much resources, added resources in terms of funding, we can knock out some of these that are our higher priority to the public.
Thank you, Carl. Do I have any other questions or comments from city council members? All right, well, thank you for the presentation. And then I guess you'll be back in July for final approval. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item C, consider resolution authorizing applicant for our broadcasting working with Golden Antlers LLC to hold a special event at Lake Nazworthy. Quote, "The beer, bands, and barbecue bizarre quote event permitting specified activities, imposing requirements on applicant, and granting variances related to rules and regulations of ordinances." Carl, I guess you're on again.
Yes, ma'am. Carl White, Parks and Recreation. We have, we received a special event request for the additional leased property at Spring Creek Marina. This is by, for our broadcasting in partnership with, or jointly with the Lessie, which is Golden Antlers, also Ray Broadway, the Spring Creek Marina. So we have Chris Ling and Tabby Tibbs here from Ford Broadcasting to talk about the event. But let me just cover a few top points. This, if you recall, we did present to you some months back a request for an event at this same piece of property for a concert. That was reviewed and approved. Of course, it was scheduled for the Easter weekend, so that was canceled because of the situation. This event, this request is a bit different. The first event was strictly a concert. This event is more of a community event, a small festival, if you will. The event is Friday, proposed event is Friday, July 24th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And Saturday, July 25th, from 11:30 AM to 6:00 PM. Correction, it's not 7:00 PM, it's 6:00 PM. Again, this is on the Spring Creek Marina newly leased property. And the purpose of the event is to support a local charity and provide community activity. Next slide, please. This is a quick look at the location. Again, this is the new leased property next to Spring Creek Marina as part of the overall Spring Creek Marina operation. I'm not going to go, I'm not going to show this event and the layout. Maybe we'll come back to this slide if Chris wants to talk about it. Next slide, please. So in terms of the attendance, correction, anticipated attendance is 1,000 each day, not 500. We're seeking waiver ordinance related to the placement of tents and signs. And we, the applicant is not seeking waiver of the noise ordinance since the music would be ending at 9:00 PM on Friday and 6:00 PM on Saturday. And events at this location require explicit city council approval because of the situation.
Carl, would you stop for a minute? Because I want to start with the anticipated attendance of 500 each day with the current situation on a lot of increased COVID-19 cases. Obviously, this starts to become an issue in terms of how we control the crowd, how we distance the crowd, how we manage the crowd. So I'd like to hear from Teresa James in terms of what her expectations would be for this event.
Yes, ma'am. We did have a plan, we requested a plan to be submitted to us that we provided to Dr. Varete if they were going to exceed the 500 people per day. And I can let Carl or the applicant give a little more detail about their specific plan. The doctor of Varete has looked at their plan as well as the size of the location where they're having this event. And he did not have any modifications to what they were doing and did approve that plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question of Teresa.
Go ahead.
Teresa, is that the same information that was in our background package that Dr. Varete has reviewed?
Let me see what's in the packet.
No.
And the reason.
We were, after the information was uploaded as the background information, we received this plan after that and it was reviewed and okayed late Friday.
Okay, the reason I have a question, because when you read that background information, it's really difficult to see how all of those steps that's in the background information would be controlled.
Agreed.
It just seems like that's not, you know, not feasible, that you could control a crowd, keep masks on, keep, you know, social discipline going on. When I looked at that, I just wondered how that would happen. And with our positive cases going up, is this really something we should be doing at this time?
I will say that Dr. Varete approved the plan prior to us receiving a large number of these cases. It was late last week and not over the weekend when we received all of those cases. I can talk to him again to make sure that he's still okay with this plan. But generally, when we have conversations, his thoughts are if the area is large enough, people aren't contained, they can distance, and it's outside, there's less risk of transmission. Originally, when this came to us, it came to us at 500 each day. And then, you know, Dr. Varete is kind of taken out of it. It just has to be, go on in compliance with the governor's orders. And then it was later that it was increased to 1,000 per day.
Well, I think. Go ahead, Billy.
I was just going to say, we know that people right now are treating this as though COVID-19 have gone away. When you go into the supermarkets, when you go into the big box stores, hardly anyone is wearing a mask. And since we are not and cannot make masks mandatory, I don't see that they're going to be able to do that at this event. And then that's just going to further enhance community spread and increase our number of positives. And I, for one, even though our cases have gone up lately, I've been pretty proud of the way we have tried to manage this locally. And I think we've seen some benefits of that. But as we see more opening up, then we see that spread, you know, increasing. And to have an event like this, I just, you know, think it may just shoot us out of the water.
I think, Billy, I think your comments are very good. And I want to say the following as well. Two things that we have talked about, one is our recent cases are a result of Memorial Day weekend, which is a big weekend, parks, gatherings of large numbers of people. And we're talking about that as one of the reasons our cases have gone up. And then second of all, we talk about, well, this is going to be outdoors. Well, somehow the outdoor thing doesn't seem to be a reason for it not to spread because Memorial Day weekend is a big outdoor weekend. And yet we're saying Memorial Day weekend has become a problem for us. And in addition, we keep saying that hot weather kills this virus. But we're getting more cases during the very heat of the summer. So it's obviously not negatively impacting the virus. Just comments.
We do have the.
Or Carl, go ahead.
We do have the event applicant with us. He may want to speak to the event and we can go back to the slide that shows the layout. On the presentation, yes, thank you. Chris, you want to speak to the event?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't, I don't think I can be seen, I don't know. It's, it says I can't start my video. There we go. All right. I don't know if you can see him or not, but I'll just go ahead and begin. This event is, we're still five weeks away from the event. And some of the things that we're going to, is we've ordered these remote thermometers. So we'll be scanning everything. There what? Touchless thermometers. And we'll be testing everybody that comes into the event for fever. We're going to have staff throughout the event encouraging separation and social spacing. We're going to have, and volunteers will be assisting with that as well. We want to make sure that. We, we want to make sure that, you know, we, we want to have a, a great event that the, that the public, I think, would, would like to get out and enjoy. But at the same time, we do want to encourage safety protocols as much as we possibly can. And we are encouraging face masks as well to everybody that comes in. And I think when we say 1,000 people, by the way, to address that issue, I don't know if we'll have that. I doubt we will. But just in the event that we go over 500, you know, if we end up with 600, I want to be able to do that. Any questions?
Well, I think I appreciate your plan. I think the question mark is how do you take the temperature of everyone coming into this event with that number of people planning on attending that you expect that will attend?
Well, it's, it's an enclosed area. The whole area is going to be enclosed. So there's no, you just can't walk in. There's an entry area. We're going to have, it's going to be closed off by fencing and for the festival area.
Mayor, I have found, I pulled up in my email what their plan is, and it's a multi-page plan. But as far as the actual event itself, they have distancing for things like the children's area and for the barbecue competition. But for the event procedures, it talks about all social distancing guidelines will be encouraged and enforced where feasible. Hand sanitizer stations will be provided throughout the event. Separated restroom facilities will be provided throughout the event. Masks and other PPE is encouraged. We'll have someone walking and policing the event to ensure no congregating or large gatherings throughout the event. We'll maintain records for contact tracing purposes, which would be helpful if we did have an outbreak. SAPD and Tom Green County Sheriff's Department will be in attendance in accordance to the special events guidelines to enforce security and traffic control. And parking will be on leased grounds. Though it is a social distancing, will be encouraged. And masks will be encouraged, but there are no actual requirements that I see in here for masks to be worn.
Question, Teresa. Since this is a, an event sponsored by private companies, can they require face masks?
Absolutely. Any private business can require face masks before customers participate in those services.
Carl, is that something you would consider?
Well, it's really up to the event. The event applicant.
Okay, is that Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something you would consider, Chris?
I consider it. I just don't know if that would fall in line with the, the governor's.
It falls exactly in line with the governor's, that private individuals can require face masks. We as a government cannot require it, but private companies can.
Okay, well then, yes, we would consider that.
And then my other question is, it says that the event would support a local charity. What charity is that?
Peaceful Donkey Valley Rescue.
I'm sorry, say again.
Peaceful Valley Donkey Rescue.
I think that the event sounds like a great event. I'm sure it's an event that the citizens of San Angelo would certainly enjoy and appreciate. And as long as we have all of the requirements in place and have the ability to control the number of people and the congregating issues, I think it's certainly something that will have a strong appeal to people. Tommy, do you have any comments?
Just some questions. Chris, I, I, I would go a, a different direction. My guess is you may have more than 1,000 people. I think people are wanting to, to be able to move around a little bit more. And as you, as you mentioned, the, the week, the event is five weeks away. I, I, I'm thinking you may have more than 1,000. So one question I would have is how would you address that if you had more than 1,000? Or are you going to limit it to 1,000?
I, I think we'll limit it to 1,000.
And how would you do that?
Well, because once again, they have to enter, there's an entry gate area that they have to pass through that every, and that's where everybody's going to get their temperature taken as well. And we'll, we'll do a head count as they go in.
Okay, all right. Sounds, sounds good. And have you visited with Assistant Police Chief Fincher on the security, number of security personnel that you'll need to work with him to, to obtain and secure for just general security, public safety and traffic control?
Yes, we have.
Okay, good. And Carl, are you satisfied with the, with whatever appropriate sanitation would, would be required for restrooms at, at the event?
Yes, sir. It meets the, the basic requirements.
Okay, all right. And you've got all the insurance and indemnification items that you need?
We don't have the, the event insurance certificate yet. It was, was pending approval or not of this event.
Okay, all right, good. And this, this, they are going to monitor and control the sale of, of any alcohol, correct? This is not a BYOB.
That's correct. It is not BYOB.
Okay, all right. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve this event in later July with all the aforementioned items that we have visited with Mr. Ling about. And that he, he is going to monitor folks as they come in, ask them to wear face masks, take their temperature, work with Assistant Chief Fincher on all the public safety and security issues, all the sanitation with Carl. I would move approval of the event.
Let's make it this. Harry Thomas, Single Member, District 3.
Harry has a second with no public comment. We will take a vote. All in favor of this event, the Beer, Band and Barbecue Bazaar, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? None opposed, motion passes 6-0.
Good luck, Mr. Ling.
Thanks.
All right, appreciate it.
Item D, consider ratifying Coast of DC's resolution authorizing the use of sales and use tax funds in an amount not to exceed $400,000 to provide an economic development incentive to WMC Liquidation Company, DBA Brian Winland Corporation, DBA Winland Tank Corporation, and formerly DBA Winland Manufacturing Corporation. And today Shannon Scott is making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to introduce Wendell Hirschfeld, who is the president and co-owner of Winland Tank. He is on the call with us as well as Russell Pell, who is with Centurion Planning and Design. He is the head engineer on this project. So if y'all have any questions for myself, Wendell or Russell, we are all here on the line.
Good morning.
I will begin sharing my screen. Okay, so just to begin, to give a little background information on the company. So they specialize in the manufacturing and fabrication of steel tanks and pressure vessels for the water, wastewater and chemical industries, as well as aroma tanks for the natural gas industry and light gauge tanks for the oil markets. So the expansion for this project will include a new building and infrastructure improvements for their current facility, which is located at 601 West 11th Street. And that is in Councilwoman Gonzalez's district. So currently, they have 20 full-time employees. They do anticipate hiring five additional employees within the next three years, with those employees having an average salary of $43,000 annually. So for the capital investment portion, they do anticipate expending $2 million for the new facility, equipment and machinery, as well as infrastructure improvements. So the breakdown of incentives that were approved at the City of San Angelo Development Corporation Board Meeting last month include a $400,000 capital investment grant once that $2 million is expended for the new facility, equipment, machinery and infrastructure improvements. So in conjunction with the $400,000 in capital investment, we are asking that they do retain their 20 current employees. And again, with all of the projects that we come to the development corporation as well as city council, we do run an economic impact analysis to gauge our return on investment. And in this particular case, we are anticipating 10.4 million in annual economic output as well as 4.5 million in gross annual product annually. And I believe we have, yes, we've got a, the design plans here that include the infrastructure improvements, some sewer line and water line, as well as the, the construction of a concrete road from Bryant all the way up to the facility at 11th Street. And that will conclude the presentation. So again, myself, I would be happy to answer any questions if we all have any questions for Wendell or Russell.
I'd like to ask a question of Wendell, please. Good morning, Wendell. Thank you for being here today.
Thanks for having me.
Considering what we've all seen in terms of the oil and gas volatility right now, how do you see your investment today compared to what might have been the consideration of it when the market was a stronger oil and gas market? Do you have any concerns?
Well, yes, and thank you for the question. And thank you, Mayor and City Council for having us this morning. Yes, the oil and gas market is obviously down significantly. However, our company has not been highly leveraged in the oil and gas market. We have specific pieces of equipment that we manufacture for the market. But even that, those pieces of equipment are midstream or downstream. So the majority of our market actually is more focused on the water market. So water treatment plants, commercial HBAC, these sorts of markets, that's, that's really our main focus.
Thank you for that. I think everyone needs to understand that you have a broad-based business profile and it's not singularly focused on the oil and gas industry. So that, to me, is, is, is really important. Other questions for Wendell or Sharon or Russell at this point on this Coast of DC investment? With none, may I have a motion for approval?
Mayor, I'm in for a motion.
Ling is making the motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
A second by Tommy Ebert. With no public comment at this point in time, we'll take the vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Wendell, for your investment in this community.
Thank you, everyone.
We will move on to item E, which is a public hearing in consideration of a resolution approving case SU20-01, a request for approval of a special use to allow contractors' yard and office and related activities in the low-rise multifamily residential sunny district located at 414 Webb Street. John, you're on.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is, as you mentioned, a special use. This would allow a contractor's yard. You can see on the map here, it's kind of a triangular shaped area. And it does have some homes around it, but I'll talk about that in just a minute. It is about 1.3 acres. It was originally zoned lot manufacturing. And so that plays into the use that's been on the property for quite some time as, as like a storage yard. And so the proponent on this case is, has taken ownership of this and has cleaned it up and done some things to help actually make it more palatable to the surrounding area. It has since been rezoned. It does show on our comprehensive plan has neighborhood and it's been rezoned to low-rise multifamily. So generally for apartments, although this particular property is not necessarily well-suited for apartments. And as I mentioned, it's been used in the past for outdoor storage. And so I think our belief is that the special use to allow it to continue as an outdoor storage area, but with some conditions that require it to be cleaned up and improved and especially including screening from the surrounding neighbors. This is just a site plan. It's, it's a little hard to see, but a couple of buildings proposed on the property. I think one is existing already. Just a few pictures. You can see some of the improvements that have already been made. Improvements both to the building as well as a nice tent that helps screen this area from the surrounding neighbors. And then just looking in the other direction at some of the neighbors of the area. As I mentioned, it does improve and clean up what was a non-conforming property. The proposed use with the screening is less intense in many ways than, than the apartments that could be allowed on that property. It does provide an effective transition. As you, I didn't mention when we were on the aerial photography, but it is near the railroad tracks, just adjacent. So it provides some transition there. And there is a mixture of zoning in the area, although it does back up on one side residential. If you look at the whole area, there's a mixture of commercial, heavy commercial, as well as manufacturing. We did send out our notices to the surrounding area. We received one in favor and one in opposition. But after hearing the presentation at the planning commission, that one opponent was, was less opposed, I'll put it that way, knowing that the conditions on the special use would require the screening to be maintained and some of the other improvements that would be required by the property owner. Staff does recommend approval of the special use with the four conditions that I'll mention. And then the planning commission, this at their May meeting, and also unanimously recommended approval. The conditions are basically to obtain a building permit and site plan when required. They must maintain all of the screening that they've proposed. They must get any sign permits if, if they plan to put up any signage. And then the paved parking and access drive connection to the street. As you may notice, three of those conditions are simply restatements of things that are already required in our ordinances. The one additional is the number two that requires them to maintain that screening from the additional, from the adjacent properties. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I want to make a comment first. I know that everything that David Bajure does is done first quality, first rate. He has done some terrific improvements in, in the city, particularly some of the downtown area, but David does first-class work. And I am excited to see him take on this project, this property, because I know it will enhance the area around it and will enhance the property. So I am strongly in favor and supportive of this. Do I have other questions or comments from council?
Eric Thomas, Single Member, District 3. I move to approve the special use. I think the bottom line is, is it really helps improve this area.
Now, second.
Second by Ling, with no public comment. We'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes 6-0. We'll move on to item F. First reading of public hearing of an ordinance providing for abandonment and vacation of a public alley comprising approximately 1,950 square feet or 15 feet by 130 feet of an unpaid east-west alley within blocks for the Goodfellow Edition, generally located north of Paint Rock Road and east Goodfell Avenue. John, you're on.
Thank you again, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. You can see here in red on your, on your map, the alley in question. It, it's never been used as an alley. It was just platted back when this property was platted just north of Paint Rock Road here. The property owner to the north of that alley has requested this. They are in the process of purchasing what is now a city-owned piece of property right there at the corner of Goodfellow and Paint Rock. And so this, closing this alley will allow them to incorporate both of those lots as well as what is currently an alley. This is all neighborhood in planning and single-family zoning in the area. You can see here the property. There's a house and then the, the vacant alley and then the vacant piece of property that they're purchasing. We did send out the two notices to the affected properties, did not receive any responses to those notices. As I mentioned, it is an unused alley. There were no objections from either other city departments or utility companies. As I mentioned, this, the applicant is requiring the property to the south and it will allow them to integrate all of these properties together. Staff does make, recommend approval with two conditions, submitting. Staff does make, recommend approval with two conditions, submitting a replat to incorporate all of those properties, and then paying the fee as established in the city's fee schedule. And on May 18th, the Planning Commission also recommended approval unanimously. That I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions from council or comments?
Mayor, I'd move approval of the alley abandonment and vacation and the conditions suggested by staff.
Thank you, Tommy. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Tom Thompson. With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes six to zero. Number, on item G, first reading of public hearing of an ordinance providing for abandonment and vacation of a public alley comprising approximately 2,200 square feet, or 17 feet by 130 feet, of an unpaid north-south alley within block two of the Kinley Edition, generally located north of Ellis Street, west of North Bell Street, and south of Houston Hart. John, you're on again.
Thank you. This is another alley abandonment. As you mentioned, you can see on the graphic there, it's never been used as an alley, and in fact, for at least a few decades now, there's been a building built over the top of that alley. So at some point in the past, the property owners of all of those adjacent lots built that building across the alley, probably not realizing that it was a platted alley. And the current property owners are just looking to clean up their property by abandoning that alley. It is in a commercial area just south of the Houston Hart Freeway, north of Ellis Street. This is a picture of that building on the side. Couple more views of it. We did send out our notices, did not receive any responses in favor or in opposition.
Be hard to be opposed or support considering it's already there.
Right. As I mentioned, the alley's not used for any utilities or as an alley.
Are today inside that building?
I'm sorry?
What is the alley used for, since it's inside that building now?
Actually, I'm not sure. I think that's mostly for storage, but it's not used as an alley. I know that.
Okay.
Likewise, with the last case, there was no objection from any city departments or private utilities. And it does clean up an existing situation where that building has existed for years.
I would hope not.
I would hope there would be support for this, because I don't think we're going to ask you to move the building.
Staff does recommend approval with the same conditions as the previous case, submitting a replat and then paying the required fee. And the Planning Commission also recommended approval unanimously. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Eric Donald, single member District Three. I move to approve the abandonment of this particular alley.
Lane Carter, I'll second.
A second by Lane. With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes six to zero. Item H has two parts. The first reading of public hearing of, one, an ordinance approving CP 20-03, an amendment to the city's name post comprehensive plan, changing certain lands from the neighborhood future land use to the neighborhood center future land use, being 1.859 acres located west of Pier Street between Sherwood Way and Colorado Avenue. And two, an ordinance approving Z 20-07, a rezoning from the single-family residential zoning district to the neighborhood commercial zoning district, being 0.413 acres at the southwest corner of West Beauregard Avenue and South Pier Street. John, you're on.
Thank you. That very long description kind of described what's going on here, but it is a comprehensive plan amendment for all of the properties you see. But then it's a rezoning of one property, and that'll show better on a map coming up. You can see the future land use now is neighborhood of all of these properties in, in red. But many of them, if not all of them, are used currently as commercial. And so the change to the comprehensive plan would change the future land use of those all to commercial to reflect what's on the ground in addition to the applicant's property. And so you can see here on the zoning map, the, those properties to the north that were changing the comprehensive plan designation for are already zoned some type of commercial. And so the only zoning change is actually this property in red here that's currently RS1. But if you've seen the property, it's actually been a parking lot for this shopping center for many years now. And so the new owner is looking to possibly construct a commercial use onto that property. You can see a picture here is the parking lot in question, so that's the subject of the rezoning. And this is just a different view of that same parking lot. And just some pictures of the, some of the other businesses, the Smokehouse Barbecue. Again, it's currently in the plan as neighborhood, but it's a commercial business, and so we're changing the plan for that area. Similarly, these other properties that are used as commercial currently, we're just cleaning up the future land use for those. And here's a couple more similar properties. We did send out our notices, received one in favor and none in opposition to the plan amendment. And similarly with the zoning, we did not receive any responses. I've kind of gone through this. The rationale is to basically reflect what's on the ground now with the existing development. Staff does recommend approval of both the comprehensive plan amendment as well as the rezoning, as did the Planning Commission unanimously.
So were those businesses that are there now, but they're under the right zoning, or were they, were they developed without the correct zoning at the time they?
No, they, they do have the correct zoning. I'll go back to that map. As you can see, they, they already have either neighborhood commercial or general commercial zoning. It's just the, the comprehensive plan shows it still as being residential. And so we're cleaning up the comprehensive plan.
So you're cleaning up the plan, not changing? Yeah.
That's, that's correct.
Got it, just to make sure. Okay, with that, do I have questions from council?
Mayor, this is Lane Carter. I've spoke with the new owner of the lot and their intentions, and I'm certainly in favor. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
By Tommy Hebert. With no public comment, we'll take the vote. I'm assuming we can take a vote on the entire H1, H2 at one point. Okay, so with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes six to zero. We will go into our closed session at this point in time. The executive session on provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, subchapter D. Exclusions to requirement that meetings be opened under the following sections, so A 551.076, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits. With that, I think we go out of this and we call into something else, and I'll talk to you in a minute. Back from our closed session. So we will start with an announcement on the item discussed in our closed session. So Billy, if you would go ahead and present that.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the purpose of IT security software through a cooperative purchase in an amount in excess of $50,000, and additionally authorize the ongoing payment of annual software maintenance. That's my motion.
Thank you, Billy. Do I have a second?
Second, Mayor, Tommy Hebert.
All right, a second by Tommy Hebert. And with that, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. The next item on the agenda is consideration of approving various board nominations. Today, we have the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee of Caitlin Wiley for SMD1 to the first term ending January 2022. Do I have a motion for approval?
With approval, Mayor, Tommy Hebert.
Okay, Tommy.
Second.
Second?
Second.
By Tom Thompson. And with that, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes 6-0. Item C is announcements and consideration of future agenda items. I think the only thing I want to announce is just to remember that July is going to be a very busy month. So we have two regular council meetings and we have two budget session meetings. So book every Tuesday, put it down, and we'll see a lot of each other in July.
Mayor, I'd like a future agenda item just for a discussion and update on the stormwater plan mainly regards to the Sunset and Parkview Lakes.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? With, with none, we will, I will ask for an adjournment. May I have one?
Mayor, move adjourn, Tommy Hebert.
A second, please. A second by Lane. We'll take a vote. Everyone in favor of adjournings, say aye.
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 Passes 6-0. Have a good afternoon. See you soon. Bye, everyone. Thank you so much.